What do you have? I just got a mess.
Pretty much.
Okay. Ready? Yeah, five thirty.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Well, coffee. Commissioner Newbecker.
Yeah.
Commissioner David.
Here.
Commissioner Scott.
Here.
Commissioner Sorbrook.
Present.
Commissioner Vaughn.
Present.
Item two, approval of the agenda. Are there any corrections or additions to the agenda?
Agenda. On here. But there. I'll make a motion to accept the agenda as presented. I support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Newbecker to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries item three A, review of the minutes. We have November ninth, twenty twenty-one regular meeting minutes.
I reviewed the minutes. I'll make a motion to accept them as presented. Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Sorbrook to approve the November ninth, twenty twenty-one regular meeting minutes. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries item three B, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-one Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes.
I reviewed those minutes and I propose a motion to accept them as presented.
I support. I have one thing.
Commissioner Scott.
In discussion items F, Chairperson David is working on getting some answers from the state of Michigan. I believe that.
Correct.
Think we need to add Curtin College in there so later on when we look at that, we just don't think that the boss is. I just don't want somebody looking later on saying, what's the boss looking for from Michigan? As amended. So.
Did you get that, Tracy?
Yep.
We have a motion from Commissioner Vaughn with support from Commissioner Newbecker with stated changes to approve the November eighteenth, twenty twenty-one Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. All in favor, say yes.
Alright. Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries item four, public comment.
Go ahead.
It's public comment. These are agenda items only. The rules are listed on online. Public comment in that room. Any public comment on the phone? Any public comment on the phone? Item five, correspondence. We have correspondence from Menominee County.
Right.
Michigan Institute of Forensic Science and Medicine related to personnel changes in Mesaki County related to the medical autonomy. Those have been received and filed. It was kind of odd, the Michigan Institute of Forensic. Was that Dr. Bush that was here?
It was.
That's what I thought.
Yes.
So there's been two major positions changed.
Top two positions, yeah.
Yeah.
He stepped down as CEO or chief medical.
Yes, that's what that said. Did you read it?
Yeah, I'm reading it, yeah.
So did you read it before the meeting or are you reading it now?
No, I just read it.
Oh.
Sorry.
Anyways, those have been received and filed. Item six, action on consent calendar. We have to, we're going to go forward with these individually. Item A, Matt.
North Shore.
Thank you. Why didn't you tell me that beforehand? You just said Matt. Related to the legal services proposal. Come on up, sir. Oh, my gosh. I am so sorry. Come on up.
I brought some presents. Our firm produces summaries of the Open Meetings Act and summaries of FOIA. You may have these. We may have sent them. I'm not sure, but I wanted to make sure that you did. These are sent usually free of charge. We are updating the Open Meetings Act summary due to amendments in the law and some changes, but these things are the most recent versions of my business cards. I bring those and circulate them.
Changes in the.
Open Meetings Act.
Permanent changes?
Well, yes, the amendments have stuck as far as the changes that they've made. There are no new changes since the last round of changes, but that's changed some things that you're able to do going forward.
Do you want to introduce yourself?
Sure, yes.
Go ahead, sir.
Well, good evening, Chair. I'm Matt North Shore. I'm an attorney, shareholder, managing member of Cole Stoker and Toski PC. We're a law firm based out of Lansing, but thanks to the pandemic, we are now a semi-remote. We are everywhere, all times, for everybody, kind of law firm where we've got hybrid setups for our clients covering the entire state. So we're no longer really tied to a physical location. Thanks to, I think, the same sort of changes you experienced at the county level. We've been in business for a little over forty years. Our specialty and focus is representing county governments. Ninety percent of our clients are county governments. At any given year, we're usually interacting with about a third of the counties in the state. And my area of coverage and expertise is labor and employment law. I advise boards and commissions as well, handle things like Open Meetings Act. There's twelve of us at the office. One, our named partner, Peter Cole, he's dialed it back quite a bit, but there are twelve attorneys working for the firm. We have a wide range of breadth, experience, expertise, but we all kind of do our own thing. They're all related, but I'm not the expert in everything. But one of the things when you hire a firm, that's what you're hiring. You're getting people who specialize in our subspecialty, which is municipal corporate work. And so I'm fairly confident in saying that we can address all of the legal issues that would be faced by Ogleman County. Certainly, the last year, year and a half has been unprecedented as far as the type of input and change and things that we are seeing from a legal standpoint. We have attorneys specializing in all the latest things coming out for what you need to do as far as OSHA, my OSHA, changes in the law. There, you know, one week we're doing it, the next week we're not doing it. We are spending a lot of time, energy, and effort in answering legal questions in that regard. That is generally something that you want to know before you ring a bell. You can't unring. And so those are the types of things that we do. One of the main benefits of working with a firm like ours that has just this type of client is that we pretty much have seen it by the time you ask it. And if you're the first to ask it, the nice thing is we are going to likely know where to look. So we really feel confident in the type of law that we practice, how we do things. We're not, we're not structured in such a way that people are territorial. You know, typically with a client, be the first call or the first email, and then I'll be putting it to the person that knows that area of the law. So we don't need you to look around for who's the best to do it. We handle that part of it. But we have a very, very competent staff of attorneys and legal experts. Nobody's learning something on the fly for you. That's a really big benefit to people who specialize in this area of the law. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. I can keep going for a while, telling you about what we do because that's.
You also represent MAC, correct?
Yeah, so the Michigan Association of Counties is a client of ours. Some of you may have seen me. I do a lot of trainings for MAC and just part of our general, we want to make sure people know what's going on out there. So Open Meetings Act trainings, I did clerk's training recently down in, I guess I was in Ben Harbor, San Joseph. I don't know if you were that one, but I did that.
I'm a deputy clerk, so I was out there.
I did an LA training there, so I felt around to do that. I was over in Clare earlier today doing bargaining. So we cover northern Michigan and work here a lot. My parents, I grew up in Traverse City, so I'm in and around northern Michigan. My residence is actually Grand Rapids. I'm, you know, cover a lot of the state. I'm usually in the car, I don't know, two or three days a week, so we have no problem doing that. I am very happy to see Zoom. I was telling Tim, Tim and I have worked together for many years. You guys pounded a diamond, so it's great that he's here. I think that, you know, what he has to offer in his experience excites me for you. Whether or not you hire us, I hope that that's proven out for you folks because you've got a really good guy here. And, you know, the, the things that he's used to from our standpoint is he knows who to call at our firm as far as areas of expertise, who to work for. There's, I think, a benefit in that historical relationship that we have been working together, but we can, we can work with just about anybody. I think that's a real strength of ours. I know you have a few new elected officials, and we spend a lot of time dealing with electeds. We understand the role and relationship between the elected officials who are your co-employers. We understand that from a labor relations standpoint. We understand the friction that sometimes occurs from a budgeting standpoint, legislative body. You ever seen? We've got quite a bit of experience dealing with those types of issues. I would say we, we represent, you know, we understand what our role is as corporate attorneys. We represent the Board of Commissioners, but there's so many things that fall under that umbrella. And so one of the things that we have learned through experience is if you ask us for a legal opinion that has to deal with an elected official's authority, we will typically tell you, hey, we think we should copy the elected official. We don't want to be weaponized against other arms of the umbrella. Our legal advice is not based upon who we're trying to please. We try to pitch strikes. We're not looking to, alright, the court wants to do this, let's have our legal opinion this way, and we'll let the county know that this is the way the court wants to do it. That's not how it works for us.
And that is the same when the elected official asks you a question.
That's right.
You're going to copy us.
That's what we tell them, and it's up to you to tell me to do that. That's what I recommend we do because it's really important that people are on the same page with these types of issues. You're paying the bill. You're the client. So if you want an opinion, you get the legal opinion. They don't get the harbor. They, you know, if they want to go out and ask you to hire their own attorney, that's different. When we represent the county, we, we represent the various parts of the county. We will often have, you know, it just depends on the client. Some clients want everything to go through a central point of contact, which is typically either the board chair or the county administrator. I like that because then I know that I'm authorized to work on a project. But there are also, we've represented a lot of clients twenty, thirty, forty years. The clerk is not calling the board chair in Hingham County before she calls me because we have a very longstanding historical relationship. I know what to do. The board trusts that we know what to do or whoever's assigned to it. But especially with a new client, we want to be very clear on what your expectations are for communication. You want to know what we're doing, frankly. Depending on how you set up the fee structure, you want to make sure that you're getting value for the services that you're paying for. I think it's a great thing to have it run through a central source. You may have some elected officials chafe at that because they don't want to necessarily inform the administrator if they're asking about, hey, who gets to really decide how many people I have on staff, you know, that type of thing. But I think what, what
Exactly.
typically happens when we've been somewhere for a while is that people start to understand, it doesn't matter if the sheriffs ask me, the board chair asks me, or the county administrator asks me, our firm is going to produce the same answer for all three people. It's not, we're not cherry picking what the answer is because it doesn't do anybody any good to do that. And that's just not how we do, that's not how we do business. Wouldn't have the client base that we did if we did business that way. I think it's a really important thing to, to know about us, but we will do what you tell us to do. If you say, hey, just go direct with electeds and let us know afterwards, we'll do it that way. And if you say, don't do anything until you've run it through the chair or two, we'll do it that way, too.
What experience do you have with milages?
So our firm has probably the foremost expert in the state in milages. His name is David Stoker. And David Stoker and Tim Perron are two people in our firm who understand there's a lot of pitfalls in milages. We've developed an internal safety checklist on milages. You know, when does the actual milage hit? How long is it going to go? When does it expire? All those types of things we understand to help you develop a plan on your milages and drafting milage language, not something that I do personally, but I will, I will speak to Dave and Tim because they're the ones, every time I get a milage question, I give it to. They are very experienced in that regard. Dave has been practicing law for forty years. Tim is a twenty-five-plus-year attorney, and they both have a tremendous amount of experience, not only in milages, but just in elections law in general. We have another attorney who's been with us for, she's probably going on about five years now. Her name is Courtney, and she does a lot of election work as well. We don't have a reviewing milage language at this point, but election-related issues. We kind of have little practice areas within our firm, and so those would be the people who would be answering questions regarding election or milage-related stuff.
Have you done any research? And it's been a little bit of a rough year here in Ogleman County, to say the least, when it comes to legal, huh?
Just tell them what we're talking about.
When it comes to.
I have Google. Yes.
That's my question.
Yes.
So you've done a little bit of research on us?
Yes, I do my due diligence before I meet with anyone.
That's appreciated. So why do you want us?
Well, I want you because this is what we do. I mean, we are always in the business of trying to help and serve counties. I mean, I take it very seriously as a service piece. My background is political theory, constitutional democracy. I've always been interested in government. I do not necessarily want to sit in your roles. I'm not a political person by nature. Our firm is apolitical. We do not, you know, take political positions. That's your role. We give you that information. But I love government. I think the people who work with me are very attuned to government and the role that it plays. Frankly, I think that most people don't know what counties do and how much you do and who you do it for. I mean, your job really is taking tax dollars and transforming them into services, and you do a tremendous amount of service work within a community that most people think of as government jails, courts, or disturbed deeds, and they don't really necessarily associate that with counties. We understand that we're comfortable in that field. It's just we have the capacity and we have the desire, and I think that you just fit naturally with the type of client that we want to represent.
I'm sorry, who's got? Hey, I was going to go one at a time. Mr. Sorbrook, do you have questions?
Ever. And you want to do it.
I'm, I just have a couple of statements.
Please.
I'm glad to hear that Mr. Cole is kind of throwing back. Your firm used to represent Ogleman County back about twenty years ago, and I earned the privilege of working with Mr. Cole quite a bit, and I have the utmost respect for your firm and glad to see you're here.
Glad to.
How long did you, did you, did I miss that? Did you say that?
I don't know if, I don't know, Matt, if you were even with the firm.
No, I was not. So I've been with the firm for about ten years. So it would have been, it predated me. We, of course, have an old electronic file that says Ogleman County label. I don't dig around in there because there's not much in there.
So do you know how long? Any type of recall?
I.
Recollection?
Oh, it was twenty years ago.
It was, yeah, I've been retired. I had worked for the sheriff and I was, we used Peter in negotiations that I was directly involved in, but the firm did represent the county Board of Commissioners. I don't know how long that span was that they represented the county, but I was very impressed with Mr. Cole.
Do you have any questions?
I do not.
Commissioner Scott.
No, I forgot what I was going to add. Thanks a lot.
We can come back to you if you'd like, sir.
Yeah, yeah, just come on back.
Commissioner Vaughn.
What approach do you use to deal with personal issues?
Personnel?
Yeah.
Or, or like interpersonal, like labor work, right? So typically what I want to make sure I understand is what has transpired to date. So we don't want to shoot from the hip on anything. So most of the time I'll get an email saying, hey, we got to do something about this employee. Okay, I need to know what led to this, whether the person is represented or not, what the backstory is, who the supervisor is. I need to get a lot more information. So my first email back without, I'm condensing this, would be, give me the facts. So I got to, I got to know the facts before I can advise you on your options. That's step one. Step two is working our way through, you know, what we do. I mean, it's not the first time I've fired somebody, but we want to make sure that we do it right and make it stick if that's what we've got to do. But nine times out of ten, when I get somebody saying, hey, I want to fire this person, we're not there. There's a lot of things that we need to do first. Maybe, maybe counseling is appropriate, maybe looking at a position change is appropriate, maybe making some sort of accommodation in the workplace. I can't tell you how often. So my work really intersects a lot with ADA, FMLA. Now we're dealing with all kinds of things with COVID leaves and all these other things where a supervisor will get very frustrated for an employee exercising potentially a federally protected right. I want to make sure I know what's happened there before, and I said this earlier, I like this word, I ring any bells, I can't unring. That's probably if I was going to have a mantra for how I handle personnel issues, it's that. Making sure that we're organized, that we're putting together, if it does take a predetermination hearing, or, you know, that's what I call them. You may call them, you know, a platter meal hearing, if you're familiar with those terms in the sheriff's office. But what we're doing is we're laying out what we think the issues are, giving an employee an opportunity to respond, whether or not they're represented by a union or not. They're public sector employees. We want to give them due process. So doing that step, making sure that those steps are followed, making sure they're applied consistently, making sure that, you know, I'll ask a supervisor, what happened last time this came up? The last time this came up, it was somebody I liked and I gave my counseling. And why do you want to fire this person? You know, making sure we're avoiding disparate treatment claims. It's a bit of a chess match a lot of times when you're dealing with difficult employees, and you want to make sure that you're going through the process in a way that has integrity and that you're not making any mistakes on the employer's side. Because that's what, who I represent, right? Like, I'm, I'm pretty easy to work with, but I know who my client is. And so we make sure that we accomplish your goals, and sometimes I have to tell you, you can't accomplish that right now. And I think having somebody that you trust to give you a no is a lot more important than somebody who every time you call him up says, yeah, go ahead.
Commissioner Becker, I'm sorry. Commissioner Newbecker.
No, my question was pretty much just answered right there through this, through this question. So I'm good for now.
Commissioner Scott.
Um, you've mentioned Hingham a couple, three different times here, and I imagine you're well, quite a few big counties and everything else. And I don't think that the problems of a small county over a big county is that much different size-wise, but some people think that you gotta, you gotta compare small to small.
Sure.
Tell me five other small, poor counties like us.
Okay. I was just in Clare. There's some situations going on in Clare as far as economics and things of that nature. I don't want to use the title of poor counties. I mean, I think it really depends on population and all the other next. So, you know, Clare County, Benzie County, Calcasca County, as up and down, I don't want to be disparaging anybody because, but there, it's, what you're really asking me about is tax base. So all the ones I just listed are active clients. So in and around northern Michigan, you know, I will be in Benzie County one day, Leland County another day, which does not have financial issues that I would consider poor county. Grand Travis County, they're rounding the corner. Emmett County, you know, Calcasca, Clare, Wexford, you know, we, that's where I go. Our firm represents other, we've got.
The upper. To the upper?
Yeah, we do some work in the Upper Peninsula. That, that's an interesting dynamic. Bonnie does a lot of UP clients. I have not represented many clients in the UP other than Alger County. We're doing Alger. So there's, there really is not a type of county that I don't think our firm has worked with or for. Huron County is a relatively recent, I would say similarly situated new client to you. We started representing them in the last year. I was telling Tim this, you know, seeing your Zoom and knowing your meeting schedule, we can probably have an attorney available via Zoom just in case a question comes up on a pretty, pretty regular basis. That's totally different than when I made this proposal on July second of twenty twenty.
No extra charge.
Yeah, that'll be covered on the retainer. I'm not driving here if you pick a retainer. So what I did with the proposal, I'll touch on that for a minute, is I gave you some different options. The one that most clients choose initially is hourly because they don't know how much they're going to use us. I think Tim has the experience to kind of have a barometer about how much he thinks I'll be needed or our firm will be needed. And so that's why we proposed this hybrid, which is, I think, option two. I'm not sure. I don't remember in the proposal, which is a retainer for a lot of things that you do on a regular basis, and then an hourly for when you get into contested cases. So grievance arbitrations, you know, a Michigan Department of Civil Rights complaint, actual circuit court or civil litigation, those would be hourly, but everything else that I've listed would be covered under the retainer. The thing about that is you're going to have a lower starting point on the retainer. You'll have some cost control in that way. We can give you data every year showing the number of hours worked, and you can do the math, and if it's way out of line one way or the other, we can talk about it. But we bid things based on our experience and what counties like yours typically need. And it's really, it's going to vary a little bit. I encourage to hear that a lot of your collective bargaining is resolved. My life has been collective bargaining nonstop for the last three and a half months. I was kicking myself for all these one-year status quo contracts that were so smart during the pandemic. That's come back to bite me a little bit on a scheduling standpoint. But I, I think you have a three-year. Is that the? So that's wonderful. I mean, that is a lot of work, time, and energy and effort that has already happened here, but there's still a ton of things that need to get done. I don't have to tell you that. So the work has a little bit of an ebb and flow, but if you, if you have people now who are reviewing your contracts, I mean, we have contracts, people, half a dozen contract people, those are your contracts we were going, that'd be covered by the option with the, with the retainer, having labor, labor advice when things come up. I think that's a good option by a retainer. The thing with starting hourly is you will have a real good sense of how much work there is right away, but every time we send a bill, it's hourly. So even if you're a retainer, you get a breakdown of what we've been doing, the description and the amount of time that it took. But we typically will calculate if you ask us to, on an annual basis, what your actual hourly dollar amount is. Some years it might be three hundred, some years it might be eighty. You know, it just depends on how much work you're doing. And that's the, that's the ebb and flow and a little bit of a uncertainty surrounding retainers. That's how retainers work. Comfortable with your attorneys. I think a retainer ends up benefiting the client more because people aren't reluctant to pick up the phone. If, if folks think, oh, every time we ask a question, sometimes you don't know how big of a question you're asking. And I'm a big believer, and if you think you should call, just do it. And sometimes having a retainer makes that decision a lot easier because you're not thinking, oh, well, that's going to cost sixty bucks for a phone call or whatever it ends up being. And, and that happens, you know, that happens with any client relationship. So I think a lot of counties prefer the retainer. Most of our long-term clients have a retainer, but I would say we're a fifty-fifty mix now between hourly and retaining.
You gave us three different options, correct?
I did.
So what option would you recommend, Tim?
Well, I had the opportunity today because some invoices came in to actually see the full year picture for what we spent in the last year, and we are almost exactly what this proposal is for the retainer and what we spent this year.
The option three.
I think it's two, the hybrid.
Three is the hybrid.
Okay, whichever one that is, to get the numbering on it. Now, I say that, you know, keeping in mind that we, as Matt pointed out, we've already done our bargaining this year. We don't have, or we've not had since I've been here, any situation where we tend to go to arbitration or any of the things that would be listed on here, sort of the extras, if you will, that are beyond the retainer. I'd also point out that a lot of what we have done this past year has been handled through the Traveler's Attorneys as well. So this is, I mean, I have no obvious idea how many, right now, because I haven't tallied it up, how many hours have been spent on those Traveler's cases. We've got the Fox case, Fox, the other one. Raffi Ali, oh, it's not Raffi Ali here. It's, it's another name, but that's taken up an awful lot of time. There's the, we just had the one this morning that I sent you the update on, the tax sale case.
Retainer.
So, right, so those are handled by the, the insurance agency. So what I'm talking about, what we spent this past year, this is just what we spent with their current firm. I said, it's almost exactly what's been proposed on the hybrid option here. Now, I want to point out that one of the things that we do here is, you know, we have zoning ordinance, and that does tend to generate a lot of questions. Under that retainer option, Ryan or anyone else on the planning commission would have at their disposal the ability to contact the law firm and say, look, is this going to be, mean that we're guilty of a taking and we don't want to do that? Or is it permissible if our plan says this and we want to zone it this way? Is that going to work? So on the Board of Appeals tends to get into legal questions an awful lot. And while maybe there hasn't been a lot of consultation with attorneys in the past, maybe there shouldn't be. Just to make sure that those decisions are being made the correct way. We do have coming up here in the next couple of years, military rules. I would definitely take advantage of the expertise at this firm about some of those. So my roundabout way of saying is I think the retainer would be the way to go. I know that's done how the county has operated in the past, but I think there'll be more value to the county if we did that.
That looks like, if I'm looking at this correctly, it's, the retainer is action three, retainer slash fixed fees, forty-eight thousand dollars per year.
Right.
To include following legal services, and there's a whole list.
Those are the things we do. We're right in the right in the wheelhouse.
Well, if we were to go to number three, one, one, one part of that is that you'll attend up to six order and or committee meetings a year. Do you mean in person?
Yeah.
The, if you attend all the Zoom meetings, though, that wouldn't be.
Not on the retainer. I mean, that's not, I can, as long as you don't, don't mind seeing other faces than mine, which I hope I've sold the concept that it's not just me at Cole.
Oh, no, no.
We have people who can cover your meetings. Yeah, exactly. And so just to update you, I think I put Dave Stoker and myself as the primary points to contact. It'll probably be Gordon Love. So Gordon is doing a lot of work with counties like yours and myself. Gordon and I are about the same demographic, I would say, as far as age and experience. Been a little longer than he has, but we work very well as a team. We communicate very well. Gordon does not, I'm not Gordon's, he's a partner. I'm not telling him what to do. He's not telling me what to do, but we, we talk together and work very well together. Dave is also available to cover meetings, but we can have somebody around because that's why I love Zoom. I mean, if you just counsel, could you answer that for us? I mean, that, that. That's why I love Zoom. I mean, i- if you just counsel, could you answer that for us? I mean, that, that is not really realistic. I can't come here. With a straight face and say that I'm going to spend four hours in the car for one question at a board meeting.
Oh, no, no.
Very well. It's kind of excites me from the prospect of we can provide better service to you at a lower cost because of this type of technology.
Yeah. And we've done exactly that. Because the, the attorney is on the Zoom.
And what we used to do is we used to always review your board packets and tell you if we thought something was wrong or. An administrator will send us a question before a meeting, but then we wouldn't necessarily be at the meeting.
So looking at these differences, we have item just, we have option one, which is a retainer for all services. Including litigation, which is inherently uncertain. We typically use option three. It's a retainer slash fixed fee of eighty two thousand five hundred dollars per year. Versus this option three, which is retainer with certain services billed hourly.
Yes.
The retainer slash fixed fee is forty eight thousand dollars per year. Now, when you were talking about the comparison, Tim, you're talking about we're at forty eight thousand dollars per year.
We're at between forty four and forty five that we spent last year. And, and those were the hourly charges. And like I said, with the menu that you see there, I, I think you would. Like Matt mentioned this too, you would see potentially a lot more use from the departments. And then again, going back to planning and zoning office where we can get into an awful lot of trouble. In that department, you know, luckily we have Ryan and we generally don't. But while Commissioner Scott sat through a couple of pretty contentious meetings. Probably you would have seen more use of the law firm if we'd had the retainer versus the hourly, which the department is having to pick up as well. Out of their budget. So it's a little bit deceptive. While, you know, we were under that amount this year. I think if we'd have used it as generously as I think we will on the retainer, I think you would definitely be over that number.
But that doesn't include, I mean, we're still going to get billed hourly. If I, am I reading that correctly? Retainer with certain services billed hourly? So do you have, I'm sorry.
I was going to point you to where the certain services were, if you're curious.
Yeah, I, I see them. I, I just, so have you had a chance to look at? What would have been billed on top of them services from last year? Or are you saying you think where we are currently? From our previous year's services, looking at this proposal, we would be at forty eight thousand dollars? Or would we be, be better off to do a eighty two thousand?
No, I think forty eight is the number to go with because to look back at the services where you would see those additional charges. We haven't had to litigate anything. We haven't had arbitrations. So to say that those things wouldn't happen, but having the contracts resolved already. Greatly reduces, you know, the arbitration possibilities. So where would we go to arbitration then between now and three years from now? Well, if we had like a termination. Of a three twelve, eligible person, we'll probably go to arbitration on those, those happen. But they're few and far between. And while I appreciate that my time here has been relatively short. Looking back at the record, I don't see any point where we've ever, this is a county gone to arbitration.
No, Mr. Sherbrooke.
Twenty five years ago.
Which isn't always a good thing, as Tim knows.
Nobody was.
Sometimes.
Somebody was, nobody was a player.
Sometimes you need to say no, though, you know, and, and then you need to be confident in why you're saying no. And that generally takes competent legal advice so that you're not. It's very important as an employer to respond fairly to employees. But there are certain things where you should not do that. And some of those things are the ones that result in arbitration. If somebody really needs to go. And we really need that person gone. We want to make sure we get there the right way and that it sticks. And so we do a lot of grievance arbitration. It depends. It's streaky. For some big clients, we won't have many others. There'll be. Six of them going on at once. So it, it just as a, as a, as a piece of. Your. Access to people who know what that is and how it works and when to go, when not to go. I'm a big believer in resolving this. But some things can't be resolved. And everybody, every once in a while, you need somebody to put the gloves on for you.
And the one I'm, the situation I'm talking about was, it was union contract. It wasn't a personnel matter. To my knowledge. I started with Coney in nineteen seventy six, so I can go back a few years. As far as personnel matters go, I don't ever remember. An arbitration as a result of an employment employee. Thing. It was always, it was union contract, you know, the depths of the time where, you know, we started three twelve eligible.
Yes.
And it went to three twelve and we're a contract issue. So that's the only one that I even remember, you know, so.
And that's speaking my language. So that's what I deal with.
In my experience, the commissioners have been threatened. That we're going to court arbitration. So you got to settle with us before and then that was the. Oh, you never want to go there. Commissioners never want to go there. Though I sat right here and said, yeah, we'll go, you know, but. And they were scared because the powers to be at that time, this is pre-Tim.
Since you've done a little bit of research on us, what would you hope to accomplish with us in the first year?
Well, we're, we are pretty used to getting a lot of questions in the first year. So what I want to make sure that we do is sort of catch up on things that may have been neglected. Or that need to get done, personnel manuals, things of that nature that haven't been addressed in a while. Whenever we sign up a new client, those are the types of things we want to work through first to make sure we've got a good baseline. And then the next thing we want to do is make sure, probably simultaneous with that, we get out there and we meet the people that we need to be working with. That'd be, of course, you folks, the elected officials, the judges, if they want to meet with us, we need to make sure that we start building those relationships. With the people that we're giving legal advice to. And then what happens is we start to get into a routine and a rhythm. And then all of a sudden, we're off and running and you got what you need. We know who to contact. We know what the flow of work should be and how things get done around here. But there's usually, I'd say sixty to ninety day getting to know each other period a little bit. Where we know we'll have to spend a little extra time, energy and effort to build those relationships. And that's true with any new relationship. Can't really do that over Zoom. That's why I'm here. So th- these are the types of things that we're used to doing. And it's, you know, a lot of experience in doing that.
I appreciate your time. Questions, any further?
Reduced rate during that initiation period.
Should actually increase it then.
The honeymoon's long gone.
I guess, how, how soon are we looking at initiating a contract? Are we going to put this on the committee of the whole to further discuss? Are we?
We got a couple of people talking.
I'm asking for a timeframe. Sure, thank you.
Next committee of the whole next week, we have another firm coming in and we begin to deliberate on that as soon as that interview is complete. And. Realistically, I mean, I think you could easily target January one. But that's depending on how your conversation goes. And if you want to widen the net or what you might want to do with it. So we haven't had a chance to talk about that yet, but.
That was my question, I guess, in a round of a way. Anything else on that, guys? Seven B, we have resolution to approve a collective bargaining agreement. With Teamsters Local Two on Four Corrections Unit. This resolution is sponsored by the Negotiation Committee on November seventeenth, twenty twenty one. Members of the Teamsters Local Two on Four Corrections Unit voted unanimously to approve a tentative collective. Bargaining agreement for the period of October one, twenty twenty one through September thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Do you have anything to add to that?
I don't, I think I might have sent you a copy of this draft about three times. But at least you're covered on it. It's, this was a contract that did go to mediation and at the end of mediation, we ended up right back where we started in terms of what. The board had offered. So it was easy for us to say yes and to bring it forward. This is the last of five contracts.
I would make a motion that we. Resolution that's presented.
Support.
A motion from Commissioner Sherbrooke with support from Commissioner Vaughn to approve the resolution to collective. To approve a collective bargaining agreement with Teamsters Local Two on Four Corrections Unit. Is there any further discussion? Missus Snow. Roll couple.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Mark Sherbrooke.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Brad Newbecker.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Item seven C, resolution to authorize purchase of a diagnostic scanner. This resolution is sponsored by the Ogama Transit Director to authorize purchase of a vehicle diagnostic scanner. The Ogama County Transit operates a fleet of twelve buses providing public transportation services to Ogama County residents six days per week. These vehicles occasionally need repairs in order to assure safe and efficient operation. Use of a diagnostic scanner is accurately. Accurately locate malfunctioning parts in transit vehicles saves time and improves confidence in repair efforts. The proposed resolution would allow for purchases, for purchase of a four channel diagnostic scanner from Snap-on Tools at a cost not to exceed eight thousand twenty eight dollars. They came in and talked to us about that.
That's right. I'll make the motion to prove this resolution. Support.
A motion from Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Sherbrooke to authorize purchase by diagnostic scanner. Is there any discussion?
So I'll come in with grants, so it's. Good to go.
We'll call like. Craig Scott. Mark Sherbrooke. Ron Vaughn. Brad Newbecker. Jenny David.
Yes. Item seventy, resolution to oppose Senate Bill five nine seven, Senate Bill five nine eight. This resolution is presented. Following discussion at the November eighteenth committee of the whole meeting, a Saba Valley Community Mental Health Authority has demonstrated a willingness. And capacity to provide an adequate and appropriate system of mental health services for the citizens of Ogama County. Senate Bill five nine seven and Senate Bill five nine eight. Privatize a public mental health system and essentially eliminate the public safety net. If approved, this resolution will formally. State the board's opposition to the Senate bills.
A motion that we adopt the resolutions presented.
We have a motion from Commissioner Sherbrooke with support from Commissioner Vaughn. I, I was, I, I was surprised to put this on here. I guess I misunderstood at the committee of the whole. I thought we were just doing a correspondence, showing that, that we were not. That we were, I guess, opposing these bills. I didn't realize we were passing a resolution, but.
You speak through your resolutions.
Okay, um, I, again, I, I voiced my opinion at the committee of the whole. It, it. There was definitely some advantages to this, but more pros and cons, I guess. So. Any further discussion on that? Roll couple.
Mark Sherbrooke.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Brad Newbecker.
No.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Greg Scott.
Yes.
Brad, did you say no?
Yeah.
Okay.
Item seventy, resolution in support of vaccine awareness and medical autonomy. This resolution is presented following discussion at the November eighteenth committee of the whole meeting. The federal government has publicized plans to compel certain employers to require their employees to vaccinate or submit to testing for COVID nineteen. In consultation with medical providers, citizens informed about the risk and benefits of any available medical interventions such as vaccines are best. Positioned to make informed decisions regarding their own bodies. If approved, this resolution will formally state the board's opposition to government actions that require or mandate to any employee. Respective. Or contractor to inject any form of vaccine or partake in medical test verification, verification as a general condition of employment.
I would make the motion to support this resolution. Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Becker for support from Commissioner Sherbrooke to approve. In support of vaccine awareness and medical autonomy. Is there any discussion? I thought it was very well written, very well written. I thought it was very similar to the one that we also received from. Wasaki County this week.
Yeah, about that.
I mean, it was just me. Any discussion on that? Nothing, guys? Please.
No, I don't have anything.
Roll couple.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Brad Newbecker.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Item seven F and seven G, we're going to put together. These are the resolution to authorize entry of participation agreements and partial settlement of the national prescription opiate litigation. And item seven G, resolution to authorize entry of state local government interstate agreement concerning allocation of settlement. Proceeds in the national opiate. Litigation.
So there's only one. Icon on the Zoom that I don't recognize and I don't think that's the attorney. Nobody's going off mute. So what I'd suggest we do is just continue on with the agenda. The attorney, Tim Smith, said he would. Log in on Zoom at six thirty.
We're going to come back to those.
Just set them aside and come back to them and then deal with the rest of the agenda.
Okay, so we are on to claims, correct? Yes. So claims, we have a total amount. Is a hundred and eighty five thousand, one hundred and forty dollars and seventeen cents. Who reviewed?
I, I reviewed them. Just some, some things that just drove up that price. Drove up the number. We, we had an installment on the pay treatment center, twenty two thousand dollars. The airport allocation. That's a. Allocation to the airport, the first, the first one of the fiscal year was twenty nine seven. Housing, which is paid through all through housing and everything is sixteen seven. So, and then the, the second. Police car was another ten thousand dollars like the first one was. And all these seem to hit us. At the same time, so what was a. Nice, easy one last time is now a hundred and eighty two thousand dollars this time.
You, you said police car. That was, wanted to get that other Tahoe all equipped.
Yeah.
Up to Rust common, right?
Yeah, pretty much matched the first bill.
Yeah. Brad, I think you reviewed him as well.
Yeah, yeah, there was also MSU was on there, the airport. The only, the only thing that I, I talked to Tim earlier today was the tire situation. We, we made a five thousand dollar purchase. With the tires. Which. With the way that we purchased them would have taken us over that five thousand dollar threshold. So that probably should have been approved once, even though. That's a state. How do you want to say that?
We, we authorized the department to proceed on those if it's on my deal, the state bulk purchase program. This is a program where the state sends a bid out. Once a year annually and, you know, plus the best price for these products. Actually, I believe the, the vehicles are purchased through that program too. It just dramatically reduces the cost. And it's generally accepted as. Not needing to do anything more in terms of bidding it out.
So this tires for the tran- tires for what?
Patrol cars. Patrol cars. They're one of the tires that they purchased. And I, and I agree with, you know, putting it out for bid because obviously they got on tires, but. Because of the way that we purchased them, it probably should have been something that we got approved by the board.
Because the transit just did tires. That was last meeting. Somebody came up and. It was like eight thousand dollars, wasn't it?
Hmm, yeah, something like that. And he came and talked to us about it.
He did. He did.
The only other thing I had was concerned about is just the way we were inventorying them. And I was hoping to ask the sheriff that tonight. Because I, I obviously don't know how they're inventorying those tires, but. The bill had, had the tires being sent to. The installer. So I'm just curious as to how we have transparency as to. Do we know that all those tires are going to get put on our vehicles? And then what's going to happen to the old tires? Are they still usable? Or at the, or at the end of their life?
Do they change those every, like? Spring, winter, I guess that.
Mark would probably.
What would I know, sure. Historically, back in my former life. It's been done the same way. The tires are stored at whomever and I don't know who they're having do the installs now. I'm assuming. Quick loop.
Yeah, yeah, it's village, village.
What's every local?
So. Because number one, of space limitations, they would store them for us. If the tires, if the takeoff tires. Were still. Viable, shall I say? Then they set those off on a side. Ordinarily those would be used. As a spare. If the spare is still brand new, and I don't even know if these cars comes with full size spare tires in them anymore, quite frankly, most cars are. I would hope the police cars are, but.
They probably don't fit.
What we would, what we would do. Back in my day. What we would, what we would do back in my day was if the spare tire was a brand new tire, they would take that off and put on one of the takeoffs. And then we would not have to even buy, let's say, four brand new tires. We could just buy three, you know, or two or whatever, however it worked out. Um, I'm not aware of what the current how, how they're doing it currently, but that was, I could just relate historically as to what we did back in my day.
Now, now that you mention that, that is, I'm, it, I mean, obviously, this is something that they need, and, and we definitely would have approved, but since this isn't a five thousand dollar purchase, how come it didn't have to that exceeds the twenty-five hundred dollars that we have approved? How come that didn't have to come and just a- at least inform us of this at the committee of the whole last week?
Typically, uh, anything over five thousand would have required an RFP to go out, so formal proposals that would be brought back in, in this case, formal quotes on the tires. In our policy, though, we've written, if you go through my deal, that process is necessary. We can forego it because the state's already done that for us. And so we're getting that statewide pricing. Now, should it have come to you? Should, uh, the sheriff have been here and said, oh, by the way, we're doing this? Uh, yeah, I mean, it's a good idea. I probably didn't think about that is all. So I can certainly get ahold of the sheriff tomorrow and suggest in the future that he at least, uh, give you some kind of a notice either at a meeting or by email that the purchase is, is coming up. This is what obviously will be planned. If it's being done seasonally, so it shouldn't be a, you know, great inconvenience just to let us know.
Well, it's the same thing, same question we had when the ten thousand dollar bill came pro outfit in the car. You know, and I mean, I mentioned, can we get somebody in, inside the county to get, to get this money? You know? And, you know, I just man, it's a lot of money.
That was just a lot of money for, you know, to be equipping just about every vehicle.
I don't think I have to be a police officer to know how much money it costs to fit a car. And I'm getting kind of tired of getting answered like that. You don't know, you don't know because you're not a cop. Well, and then the last, the last answer I got was you don't understand because everything operates by the fly. Yeah, well, I'm about done flying. You know, we're gonna start running like a business. This last report I just saw today looks like somebody doesn't understand business.
Well, I think that, um, you know, I'm, I'm sure that everything that they're doing here is, is stuff that they need, but I just think that it should probably be, uh, tracked a little bit better than it is right now. Should be some stability back to the vehicle.
Not saying that.
How long?
A yes or no in it, but it's an awareness thing. You said to yourself, the transparency in it. That was the word, you know? It's just knowing, you know?
Communication.
We all get, we all get hit. All of us here get hit with these questions outside of here. You know, and when we don't know a damn thing, you know, I don't know, isn't a great answer.
Okay. Anything else on claims, guys?
Well, I thought it's gonna take up till six thirty until I.
Appreciate your stretching it.
It's good job.
Can I get a roll call vote for that? Brad Newbecker.
Yes.
No, yeah. Hold on. Okay, all right, Brad Newbecker. Jenny David.
Yes.
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Ron Don.
Yes.
And it looks like our gentleman, Mr. Smith, is that who I'm seeing, who I'm seeing related to item seven F and item seven G. Mr. Smith?
Good evening.
Hi, how are you?
I'm doing good, doing good.
Can you give us a little insight on this?
I can. Do you want to do it in closed session, though? Since it deals with settlement of pending litigation?
Oh, he recommends it.
Are you recommending that?
I am.
Oh, wait, I do, I did not know that. So I guess can we, let's do that then at the end of this me- uh, meeting, we're gonna go forward. We don't have a lot more to cover.
Okay, what would you like me to do?
Uh, probably fifteen minutes.
Okay, Matt, uh, if Matt, Nat's there, he can shoot me a quick email. I'll zoom right back in.
Okay, how about ten minutes? They're telling me to make it fast.
Beautiful, ten minutes. Okay, see you then.
Thank you, sir.
Goodbye.
Uh, unfinished business. I don't believe that there, is any crack, Tim? Administrator's report.
Okay, just got a few quick updates for you. Uh, first, I know a couple of you had already called about the status of the secretary position. Uh, the application should be finished and posted on our website. If not tomorrow, by Monday for sure. I don't remember if Tom's gonna be in tomorrow or not. But that'll be on our website. We'll actually put it at, uh, on, uh, indeed at the same time and get that process rolling. It would still keep us on schedule to have the position filled in January. I would like to invite one of the commissioners, uh, whomever might want to volunteer to sit down on interviews for that. Don't have to answer now. Uh, but, uh, would, particularly because the position is going to be working with you directly too, it would be good to have your input. Candidates. Uh, next item, I'm sorry, Tracy left. I was gonna update you on the Nova Time Training. We are deep into that. That's the electronic time card piece that we've been working on. Uh, the approval of these contracts couldn't be more timely because part of what they're doing with the system is plugging in all the different nuances for pay. Whether it's premium pay, overtime pay, how that's done, uh, field training officer pay and so on. They're programming literally all those variables into the system and will be coded so that as, as advertised that when a timesheet is turned in, everything gets dispersed where it needs to go, and Tracy's work is pretty well done. So, uh, it's just key to have all those different nuances and the various contracts in place. So that was, um, two hours yesterday afternoon, we were online with them as they're building that system for us. And again, we're still on target to be testing, uh, shortly after the first of the year. Uh, they did tell us too, that sometimes when we do testing, we'll pick a department like perhaps the clerk's office, and it works so well that they will just continue doing it from there forward, and they will have to wait for the big cut over date, uh, to make that work. Obviously, our big challenges will be at the sheriff's office. They have all of different, uh, most of the different nuances in the pay types. Uh, but even that, it looks like it's gonna go pretty smoothly for us. And then lastly, I met this morning with Mary Fox from the fair to discuss, um, our ARPA uh, situation, very, very constructive conversation, and I think we'll, uh, see more from the fair here in the very near future. They, uh, are very well positioned. They already have a capital improvements plan, for instance, and can tell us about what the revenue loss was and so on. So that, that was, I thought, a very good meeting. Uh, a lot more going on out there than I realized.
She sent me an email.
So, good meeting. So we'll again see more about that as we get more into the ARPA dispersals. And that's it for my report. And unless there are any questions.
Mr. Jim.
Yes, did you have something you wanted to add?
Mark, Mark and I are on the personnel committee.
Okay.
Standing committee, you know, as far as dealing with personnel matters.
Okay.
Well, he's asking for a commissioner to maybe sit in on the interviews. That's what the personnel committee would do.
Okay. He, he did say you don't need to answer now.
I'm not answering now. I'm just thinking that you're on the personnel committee.
Thank you.
And I think either one of us could probably be available, one or the other. Depending upon when it is, if Mr. Scott's out of, if he's out of state for, for meetings, for meetings, yes, then I would certainly be available.
Have you had any, have you had any department head meetings?
No, not since, uh, the last one I reported on, um, got one coming up here. It's not next week, it's the following week. Remember, it's in December. For department.
Okay, I was just wondering if anything.
Yeah, and this is good news on the end there because I thought I'd used you guys up.
No, no.
Uh, elected officials and department head reports.
The following week.
Clerk.
Um, the clerk's office is under construction. We are getting new carpet, which has caused us to relocate over here. Um, hopefully that will be done tomorrow morning, finished up, and we'll be back set up tomorrow afternoon. It's kind of been a little difficult to do CPLs. Um, so we put a stop a stop for a day or two to those tomorrow. We should be back up and running on those. Yeah, pause, um, um, that, uh.
It'll be pretty nice when we get done.
It's gonna be very nice when it gets done. It'll be worth all the hassle.
Jeff, I see you're on the phone. Did you have anything you wanted to add?
Uh, nothing here, thank you.
Any other department heads or elected officials on the phone? Management floor? None? No motions for adoption. Committee reports. Commissioner Serbrook.
I attended, uh, Clark Township Board Meeting last week. Nothing to overshadow in there. Yesterday, District Health Department number two, we did the, went over the performance appraisal for the director. Pretty positive review, few areas that were noted for improvement. We granted a two percent raise. She didn't raise it all last year. She took a freeze last year, so we granted a two percent wage increase. And we all got early Christmas gifts. They have, they got, um, the state of Michigan has some, um, COVID incident tests that were close to expiry and the expiration date on was December the fourth, and they reached out to the health department. Um, the health department got three hundred.
Three hundred.
Three hundred. Um, they're gonna offer them free. They're gonna put them out in lobby. They're gonna offer them free for people that, uh, there's two tests to a kit. And I actually, I, I got one, and I opened it up last night, and actually the kit, the expiration date on the outside says December the fourth, but the packets on the inside are January the twenty-second, I believe. So, um, looks like they're viable till then in case somebody can't get in to get, you know, a test. The, I know, being in writing here to pick up a script a few days ago, they only had one box on the shelf. Everything else is wiped out.
You're lucky you saw that.
Yeah, and it's ordinarily twenty-five dollars. They're gonna give them away while supplies last. So if you know of anybody, especially the holidays coming up, um, you wanna be proactive and grab that. Otherwise, that's it.
Commissioner Scott?
Attended, uh, Foster Township, was unable to attend the, uh, Ogumah Township or the airport this month. I was out of town. Um, the, uh, road commission meeting is tomorrow morning. And so, uh, oh, and then Parks and Rec, we didn't have a quorum, so we were unable to meet. So, that's where we're at. There's a, there's a planning commission meeting next, next week versus the December because of the holiday. We went to the first of December's. That's it. Bell ringing. Oh, Commissioner Serbrook and I,
So did I.
We may not be the only ones.
Twice? Oh, yeah. Well, I don't know. At least Commissioners Serbrook and I, I can talk at least the two of us, and now the clerk. We we were involved in the bell ringing for the Salvation Army. And we did it at Walmart. I don't know.
Friday and Saturday.
At Walmart?
Yep.
Cause I know they do it in other parts of the county too, in other stores. I think they do something over there in Mills. At least Christmas time, I think.
I haven't been in and out of there lately, but I think they do it there at the grocery store.
But we were on, uh, the sign when I, when, when I was there was elected officials and a church.
Yeah, the day before was.
And the only reason I say that is a lady came up to me and said that I work for Wexford County. And I'm really surprised. She asked if I was with the church or an elected official, and I says, I'm, uh, county commissioner, and she, oh, really? I mean, I know she was very impressed that I was a county commissioner, but, um.
Volunteered. Commissioner Von?
Ellen Q was on the Parks and Rec. Okay.
Commissioner Scott mentioned Parks and Rec, uh, no, no quorum, so we really didn't have a meeting there. It was just kind of a BS session for fifteen minutes. We got out of there. And then I was to the district health meeting with, uh, Mr. Serbrook. Yeah, no, step inside the doors. They don't want a ton of people coming into the, into the building down to district health, but they're supposed to be right inside the door, so you can step in and grab a test kit and right back out the door.
Yes, I'm sorry. Is the booster walk-in there?
No.
So it's not, okay, cause I've had patients ask, and I don't know.
It's appointment, yeah.
Sorry, I did not mean to interrupt.
They don't run the vaccination clinic. On a daily I wanna say eight thirty to four thirty daily, they want to be able to schedule people. So they're not wasting vaccine if they can help it.
Yeah, I was just wondering if the booster, if people.
Sterling area health, I was on, um, I forgot this Zoom call this morning with, um, the Ogumah County Human Resources Coalition, and Sterling Health is our forum, um, sounds like every day, and they take walk-ins. They prefer appointments, but they'll take walk-ins at Sterling area health.
For testing or for vaccine?
For vaccine, for vaccine. I am both, I think. I think testing as well too, but we're specifically talking about the vaccine, so boosters and stuff, so.
Commissioner Newbecker.
I'm sorry.
Um, I had correspondence with all three of my townships, um, mainly it was about Rifle River and, uh, also, uh, the ORV ordinance. So they all had, uh, some input, um, some of it I already forwarded to Tim. And I'm still waiting for their, uh, official opinion regarding the ORV. Um, I'm pretty sure I know where they stand on the Rifle River. Which is pretty much where I think everybody's at, but that's all I have.
I did not make the EDC meeting, um. Mary is, uh, stepping, uh, down unfortunately. Uh, very disappointing, but she's, uh, taking a job that, that fits her current, uh, life, so we'll be actively searching for a new, uh, director, I was gonna say head. It's, it's very important because she's very good. Anyways, I did attend the Economic Outlook, um, that was very, very good. Uh, they had a representative from Myers. They had, um, a representative from Michigan Hospital, and they also had, um, fetish concrete there, a panel. Um, it was pretty good turnout. Breck was there. Um, it was very interesting, very intriguing. Uh, afterwards, Mary did follow up with a township, um, educational seminar for the ARPA funds, and that was a decent turnout too. Um, as far as shooting ideas off on, uh, what townships can do with these monies, uh, two out of three of my townships were there, which was, uh, Logan and Richland. And Richland got the idea of, uh, the campground. They're looking at putting in more electric. Um, we discussed that with Mary, if that's a go ahead, and then Logan also possibly some renovations on their, uh, hall because they've lost revenues with, uh, COVID and, uh, renting the hall, and that's really their only form of income. Um, so that was discussed. That was good. There was pretty good turnout. Some individuals from West Frantrow City were there. I attended the veterans with, uh, Jeff, that he did an excellent job. That was very, very, uh, good, very moving. I, I would like to plan that or attend that going forward. A decent turnout, um, it was, it was very nice, uh, honoring the veteran of the year. Um, I, as far as an update on Kirtland, I sent out that email on that, uh, lady that you gave me. Um.
Kristy Dugan.
Yep, Kristy, Lori, Greg, elections.gov, um, and I have yet to get a single response. I did reach back out to Greg today. So that's why I said, sir, we'll be talking. So we, uh, just a, uh, it's related to a villages on a, uh, uh, community college, so I will still keep you updated every meeting. I still will, uh, resend emails and hopefully get some type of response, but I, I haven't left this quite well enough alone yet, so I just wanted to give you a little update on that.
Um, I'll send all of them an email tomorrow saying you're trying to.
Please.
Because I don't.
Um, I, yeah, I, I don't.
Why don't I do that?
I don't know, but I have. So, so the question, I, I told you guys at the committee of the whole, so hopefully I get some type of response going forward, uh, on those villages that we have, so I think that's all that I have.
I, I have something to add. Um, I was talking to Mills Township, um, Dave Ryan had also told me that. I was talking to Mills Township. Dave Ryan had also told me that. The volunteers that they put together, they finished working on the high banks. They got all the repairs and painting and everything done. So I just wanted to say thank you. Volunteers that have done that. It looks nice.
I haven't been out there. Does it look nice? Anything else? Questions for committee for somebody forgetting?
I think our guest Matt would like to ask you a question.
I just wanted to mention, if the village thing is happening faster than your decision, we'd be willing to review that for you. And we could just do a simple, here's a project. We would like you to review this for us. We do that all the time for people who aren't active clients. It's like a call a car project that does not fit the timeline that you're. You're looking at for making a decision and you need an answer. If it's a timeliness thing, I'd be happy to be in touch with you on that.
Okay, I'll email you my letter that I sent to these. These other individuals. It's short, it's two paragraphs. Okay? Email to you?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you, sir.
There's cards here.
I have it, thank you. Um, we have that other meeting coming up. Do we have a meeting before the Rifle River?
Yes.
We do.
You actually have two.
Item fourteen, general public comment. I think everybody, I'm trying to keep this short, so I don't mean. Anybody in the room with public comment? This is any agenda items, three minutes or less, please. Any public comment? Any public comment on the phone? Public comment? So we are going to go into closed session. When we come out of closed session, there will not be any business, correct? Do we have to pass these resolutions?
Yeah.
I'm asking just a second, please.
Okay.
Of course, you have to pass them. No, but if you attend, you'll have to do that in open session.
Okay, so there may be. So that's not an adequate, an accurate statement.
Right.
Okay, so we are going to go into closed session to discuss. The the items seven F and seven G, which happened to do with the opioid litigation and settlement. Can I have a motion to go into closed session?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion from Commissioner Newbecker with support from Commissioner Van to go into closed session. Can we get a roll call vote on that?
Jenny David.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Craig Scott.
We are going to go into a closed session at six forty two.
All yours, copy when you're done.
Yes, I will.
Jenny David and McLaren.
I'll make a motion to go back to the open session.
We have a motion from Commissioner, Ms. Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner. Newbecker to go back into closed or open session, excuse me. All in favor, say yes. Opposed. Item seven F, this is a resolution to authorize entry of participation agreements in partial settlement of the national prescribed opioid litigation. This resolution is proposed by the opioid settlement legal team. Approval of this resolution will authorize execution of participation agreement for. Number one, the master settlement agreement with Janson Pharmaceuticals. And number two, the master settlement agreement with three wholesale distributor defendants. Cardinal Ameris, Amerisource, Bergen and McKesson. The settling defendants have negotiated proposed national settlement agreements with the state attorneys general. And a plaintiff executive committee designated negotiating committee that represents approximately four thousand local governments. That have brought lawsuits similar to the Ogama County lawsuit.
I'll make a motion to approve this resolution. Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Serbrook. Is there any discussion?
The only thing I'd like to say is, Tim, if you could relate to Donna, that thank you for her. It was her recommendation that we go ahead with this. Strong recommendation. And it did come through a lot better than I thought it was going to. I thought we'd get a coupon.
As a healthcare provider, I'm going to abstain from this.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Brad Newbecker.
Yes.
Item seven G, resolution to authorize entry of state local government interstate agreement concerning allocations of settlement proceeds in a. National opioid litigation. This resolution is proposed by the opioid settlement legal team. Approval of the resolution would authorize execution of a Michigan State subdivision agreement for allocation of distributor settlement agreement. With Janson settlement up agreement. This resolution also. Authorizes execution of a similar state subdivision agreement to the extent that it provides a substantially similar allocation of settlement. Or bankruptcy proceeds obtained from opiates litigation with any other entity.
Make a motion to approve as presented. Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner with support from Commissioner Van to approve. Item seven G, discussion.
Much of the same as the last. Call for the vote.
I'm going to abstain from this as well. Can we get a roll call vote?
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Brad Newbecker.
Yes.
Motion carried. I think that's all that we have for business.
Make a motion to adjourn. Support.
We have a motion of support to adjourn at seven oh three. All in favor, say yes. Oppose. Motion carries.